Hey, it's September 30th at 7:00 PM. The planning commission is now in session. We'll start this with our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first order of business is to review the minutes from our last meeting on September 10th. So everyone had a chance to look at those? There are any questions? No questions? Do I have them?
I have just one.
Okay.
Um, under new business item number one, second paragraph. Who made the motion? Who made the first motion to approve the text amendment with modifications? It looks like Commissioner Share was the second.
No, you were the second.
I was the second.
You were the second.
Okay, 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 I'm good then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? No questions? Do I have somebody to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Do I have a second? Motion's been, motion approved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion approved, five to all. Okay, our next thing is public comment. Diane, did you want to wait till we get in or you want to go? Okay. Eric, you want to go now or you want to wait? Okay. Ms. Caldwell, did you want to speak now or did you want to wait when we get deeper into discussions about the comprehensive plan? Okay. Okay, so our old business, the only business we're dealing with is to discuss the comprehensive plan update. Staff, you want to?
Yeah, sure. So what you have in front of you tonight are three chapters. Part of it you've seen before, but um, there's four, five and six. Chapter four being economy and fiscal health. Chapter five being environmental, environment and natural resources and land use and community design for chapter six. So it's based on the outline that was provided at the last meeting. And if the planning commission could focus on the goals and objectives and strategies section. That's the newest part. And a lot of these things have been reform formatted to to make it more coherent. So, um, so yeah, feel free to provide any comments you have.
Okay, so anyone have any questions? And I'll just say, I was really like the format and everything that laid out, hit some key points for me. Any commissioners have any questions?
Um, I have a question about layout. I know we discussed landscape versus portrait. So if we're doing four, five and six together in the same thing, how like four and five are going to be in this landscape and then six is going to be portrait? Or will they be consistent?
So, yeah, we'll keep it consistent. And I know at the last meeting it was said that you would like maps and charts to be on landscape and text to be on portrait. Portrait, yeah, so we'll figure that out as we go along, yeah.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? Comments?
Um, yeah, I guess we'll start with just chapter four first.
Chapter four, okay.
Um, the second line from the very bottom. These buildings present the great opportunity. I think we should say these buildings present a great opportunity to attract more small businesses. Just a word change there. And then, and then for the goals, the objectives and the strategies. I think they're great, but I'm curious as to how we're going to measure those goals and strategies. You know, benchmarks, timelines. I don't know if we're going to get into that in different areas of the plan? Or if it's going to be incorporated into this or if we're not going to talk about it?
We'll definitely talk about it. There will be an implementation chapter towards the end.
I think you said that last week.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we'll consolidate everything in the implementation chapter.
Right, yeah.
Okay, or each chapter individually depending on how things look.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay, perfect, that's all I have for four.
Okay, does anybody else have any comments, questions on four? It's our business. Okay. I, you know how I am about the business. So I'm really happy with the goals and objectives of trying to grow it and diversify the region. Gives people a work here at a livable wage, big goals for me. Okay, does anyone have questions about section five? Okay, Diane, you want to come up? Okay, you need, that's fine. You got, you got your four minutes. Just come up, state your name. You don't need to get addresses anymore.
Diane Walbrecker. Okay, I really, really like what's been done. The, um, the benchmarks were in the population, the housing section. And I like the way those were laid out. So I guess it would be prudent to do benchmarks for each of the different goals and strategies, I guess. I like the way that they came together too. And this is a little beyond just chapter four. But you can see the thread that goes through all of them, which is kind of cool tying them together. So I like that, but I also like having them separately. There's some, there's some things here and I didn't spend a lot of time in the narrative section. I just spent time on the goals, objectives and strategies. Cause I think that's what most people will probably be able to digest quickly. But opportunities aligned with the skills of the local workforce. Some of these are just questions about how we would get that information. And I don't know whether that would come in the implementation section or whether I missed it in the narrative.
That's part of our implementation and we've kind of stripped out timelines for a lot of that we had in the past. By mistake, we started putting timelines, hey, we want to have this complete measurements by three years. Those are gone. Complete, so it's part of the implementation of working the same as when we get into handling real estate and codes and everything. There's, we know we want to do these things. The timing frame or exact how is stolen the drawing board.
Okay, so all of that will be in the implementation stage? Okay. Cause I know there were some, um, there was a whole program for a while. They talk about remote work hubs. And I forget Frederick County had a program at one point to fund remote work hubs for jurisdictions. And I just forget the name of it, but I think that would be fantastic if we could do something like that. Especially in some of our blighted businesses. So, oh, is my four minutes up?
I think you should have the counter ring.
Okay, okay, good. Um, on the Main Street Improvement Program, I know we're still working on that. But have we, I just throwing the question out there, whether or not we've thought about partnering with another jurisdiction? And you know, maybe splitting the costs on that.
Well, it's, I couldn't say splitting the costs. I know we have a lot of feedback from Thurmont on what they're doing. So like all of our business owners get invited to all of Thurmont's meetings. Because the woman they have down there is really good.
Vicky, yeah.
And, and everything, so she's willing, she's talked to our business owners. You know, that one to one and give us just inviting everybody here down to her meetings there.
Okay, but getting an actual Main Street program.
Program manager here. That's a different beast. It's, um, I would, first off, last time I checked, there's no budget in place at this time for that position.
Okay, so there would be a town cost share for that?
Right.
Okay. All right.
I know it's in, they mentioned Main Street in chapter seven. So potentially we could put some implementation strategies to address the things you mentioned in chapter seven.
Okay, or maybe just wait until the implementation section.
Right, when that comes out.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to see how you could have the goals, objectives and strategies without referring back or, you know. So how you package all this is, is going to be a matter of the future. You talk about. Should I just wait till the next chapter?
Well, yeah, we got to cut it short now.
Right, okay.
Okay, Ms. Caldwell, Ms. Sloan, you want us to discuss chapter four? Or you just want to wait? Caldwell, you want to speak? Yeah? Yes?
So it's a comprehensive plan. Can everybody hear me all right?
Can we hear your name?
My name is Julian Caldwell. And for the 10-year comprehensive plan, how to help the 55% of our population here who are below the poverty level. I pray that above all, you obey you God, most holy Trinity. And we trust in you and we do what you said to do. Jesus, you said, this is my body given for you. Do this in memory of me. And Jesus, again, you gave father thanks and you said, this is my blood shed for you. For the forgiveness of sin, the blood of the new and everlasting covenant. Do this in the memory of me. We pray for the faith to do what you command us to do. That we do what you said in Mark, chapter 16. Those who believe and are baptized in my name, you said, Jesus, in my name, you said, lay hands, you will lay hands on the sick and they will be healed. We pray that, that we do that. We lay hands on our sick brothers and sisters, the elderly. But thy kingdom come, Father, our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come. And you said, Jesus, in my name, you will cast out demons. And we pray that during this time of conflict between Christ and the Antichrist. We in your name, Jesus, trust in your name, Jesus Christ and Nazareth, and cast out the demons. To help our population here and all that you reach through us and all glory be to you. We take in the homeless, we do what you said. You said what you do to the least of these, my brothers and sisters, you do to me. And so we pray that we open up all of our churches in town, all of them, 24 hours a day to worship you, God, above all. And, and to take in who you send to our churches, the homeless and the poor and the hungry and the needy. We trust in your providence. Help our town by your grace and your glory. That we above all worship you and help all this you send, that we help our Knights of Columbus and our Legion of Mary, our religious organizations to do the work you've told them to do, to see you and, and, and everybody and all. And you, to see you and everybody and to love our enemies even. And to pray for them all. So we pray, Lord, to give us the grace. Holy Spirit, fill us, let's fire it up. Glory be to thee, Father, Son and Holy Spirit. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caldwell. Does anybody else have comments on section four before I move on? Our comments, I, I really appreciate about the economic leakage. That's a big thing to the business community. That we're losing all that income that's in town going other places.
I got a question for you there.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea how many businesses here are going down Thurmont to listen to Vicky?
No, not off the top of my head. I could certainly put out in our emails if it asks. No, it's, that's, we don't care. It, it would have to be, because we honestly do not keep track of that. I'd have to go back to our group and say, how many are going? And I can tell you it's not an extremely high number, but I don't have a number.
I'm just curious.
Okay, no problem. Now, but she's really good at what she does and I would love to even see her come part-time here. So, but Eka, you know, the leakage of all the income we have here going someplace else is troublesome. So I like that line. Okay, so let's go about the environment and natural resources. And, um, anybody have questions, concerns about this? Cause I know this could get into some of the issues we talked about where our planning lines and everything go, so.
I have a question. I have seen where, where the land was filled in at flood plains. And it caused a lot of problems for what was built on top. Was it the floor kept cracking and caused clogging around the places around the flood plain? And so I think it would be helpful to let the water go into the flood plain and the areas around it. So it doesn't continue to back up into the houses and businesses and streets in, in town. Thank you for listening.
Okay, um, just that when we give permits or anything that, that, that the town staff does a pretty thorough job of working with the architects and engineers to address those issues. I haven't seen in years where I, I felt stuff is out of line. I may have questioned some, but the science I can't question. That's somebody that lives in mathematics. I can't question their numbers and I will defer to the, you know, the engineers and the architects, a lot of that. An engineer or staff.
On the Paul Street and Main Street and their, their properties or their basements are being flooded. And they said, put in backflow.
Backflow preventers.
It's already being flooded. It's already in a flood plain, the properties, the businesses, um, the family general, the Dollar General and other businesses on Main Street and DePaul Street and near the water treatment plant where it's being flooded and overwhelmed already.
And that's, I, I can't disagree with that, but that's a separate issue than would be in front of the planning commission at this point and stage. Cause that's more town infrastructure and that would rely more on the council than us at this point in time. But I appreciate your input on that.
Thank you for listening.
Yeah, and I would add, um, in chapter five, they do talk about the flood plains. And it is a goal and a strategy to, you know, evaluate those buffer zones and, and flood plains. So I think we have hit on that. I don't know if it's sufficient or not. I guess we'll see the implementation, but we do discuss it in chapter five, so that's great.
Have a comment? Go ahead.
Yeah, the limit development on steep slopes and in sensitive areas. Don't we already have a limit on development in steep slopes in Frederick County? I know that the county is very sensitive about development on steep slopes.
Yeah, yeah, I believe so. We can put a different goal or objective there, but.
Is it already a thing?
Yeah, it is, it is a thing when they.
It is a thing, and I forget what the incline is. We even have the rules on the incline. Is it 25? Yeah, I know we had it just at a percentage, I just remember what it was. Any other? Comments? Dan, while you're online, you got anything?
No, 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 chapter five.
I have a couple on chapter five. Um, at the bottom of page one, chapter five, the second sentence in the last paragraph, the town soil includes variety such as, you can just remove that sentence because it's really just a repeat of the sentence before that. I would say take out sentence two in that paragraph. And then on five dash two, where, where we talk about Rainbow Lake. In the last paragraph towards the very bottom, we say that it's the primary source of water for the town. But yet, two pages later, we say over 50% of the town's water supply comes from groundwater. So the two kind of don't go together. We get the majority, so we get less than 50% from Rainbow Lake. If we get more than 50% from the wells.
Right, so from the wells, it's all combined. And Rainbow Lake, like by itself is, well, it's less than 50%, but it's still higher than each well.
Each individual well.
Yeah, but I can change that information to.
Just kind of so it makes more sense.
Okay.
Yeah, they've just removed that because it's not the primary. I would just, you know, it's the source, since it's each individual wells are greater than.
We could say is a large source of water for the town. It's not the primary, since more is coming from actual wells. Um, and then page five dash three, can we enlarge that figure so it spans one page? Because I really, even with glasses, it's, I can't read the names of the streams that we're referring to for that figure.
Sure.
And then this may be addressed when we talk about the implementation. But on page five dash six, the second strategy, create and implement a water conservation program that provides incentives for rainwater harvesting, water efficiency landscaping. I just didn't know what we meant in terms of incentives for rainwater harvesting. How would we gauge that? How would we track that? But maybe that'll be addressed in the implementation. And that's it for chapter five. I thought the rest looked great.
So were you thinking on that secondary meters as a way to track as opposed to what's your water using like for the lawns as opposed to being waters going through or use of gray water? Or are those your general thoughts in that direction?
That was my thoughts, but obviously you guys can.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Eric has a question.
Want to come up, Eric?
Live here in town and talking about rainwater and runoff whatnot. Key thing for people living in this area, remember Eloquent City. Years ago, they had this fantastic idea, we're going to go above 70. We're going to build all this beautiful stuff. What they did was they tore every tree down. You know, it's like that song, tore down paradise, built a parking lot. Well, Eloquent City now, every time you get a moderate rain, not even a heavy rain, all the water that used to be absorbed by that now goes through downtown Eloquent City and turns that little creek and into a rainstorm, a flood, and it just destroys everything. Now, I've heard people talk about having flat run dredged. Corps of Engineers isn't going to let that happen. The state of Maryland doesn't have control. The county doesn't have control. Ultimately, it is a US Army Corps of Engineers. And if you strip away everything that stops the water from running into there, you're going to have more and more flooding. And if you dike off one side of it to protect the other side, you're going to end up with what happened in Johnstown, Pennsylvania years ago. And for those of you who've been in this area, the old joke, Johnstown zero floods three. They have a huge water control. And when it rains heavy, it brought water raises 50 feet, floods Johnstown out. You've got to leave Mother Nature to let it stop and control the water running into the streams. You can't, you can't strip everything away and go, well, the engineers said it's okay. Because as the old adage goes, a prostitute will tell you anything because there's money in it. And the engineers that design stuff, if they're getting paid to design it, they will tell you what's great. Asking people who live in Eloquent City that live in downtown Eloquent City, the engineers said, it's great, it won't hurt the flood plain or flood plain. And they suffer every time you get heavy rains. I've driven through there right before a storm. When I went through one way and an hour later, there was no coming back. It was a hundred mile round trip. You know, the time is to look into the future now and see what damage we're creating now because we're being shortsighted versus going, you can't build there because it's bad. Just because somebody says, I got the money, I got somebody that says it's okay, we could do this. Because if you fix dikes on my side of flat run and the water comes up, it doesn't come up because uh, Mother Nature, it comes up because it backs up against 15 and it backs up against everything else. It's going to turn Emmett Gardens into a swimming pool more than it already does. Because the, the water is just going to push that way. And other problems, that's the reason why when the state redid the bridge at 140, they didn't raise it any higher because they weren't allowed to. Cause there are certain restrictions, but they made it almost 40 feet wider. That way water could pass underneath of it. But this town wasn't built when people were thinking of like, this is a bad place to build, we shouldn't do it. We're stuck with that. You can't go into a place and go, y'all out of here because this is a flood plain. But what you don't want to do is to make it to the point where they can't live in their own houses. And for anybody who lived in Animal County when Agnes hit, there were a lot of really nice houses down by the Seven River. Flood insurance used to rebuild them every time it got destroyed. And then the federal government stepped in after Agnes and said, there's your paycheck, get off my property. And it will happen here too, because they will get tired of paying it. Either that or people won't be able to afford flood insurance, which is part of the, the greater scheme of things. That and just come down to my neighborhood and when the traffic comes by and it's heavy raining, watch it. The roads start to flood out, not what we want. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Ms. Sloan. I, I can't put that the state of Maryland, the county of Frederick now has pretty aggressive concerns between one of, for instance, soluble, non-soluble building surfaces. And that always trying to address some of that. So I think people really took, what was it? Eight years ago, when downtown Eloquent City pretty much washed away in that one storm. So there's a lot of those concerns. It goes to the same why we have requirements that you have to plant trees with new construction and everything. And I think staff does a really good job here of working with our developers and trying to say, you know, address those issues. And if they don't like what the developer's saying, they typically come here and say, well, they may want this, but I think we should do X. So I mean, we do try to get those two sides, you know? Even though a developer may bring their engineer and architect in, staff has the expertise in that. They draw on outside resources and if they disagree, they make that. And I don't think anybody in this town wants to become overdeveloped. I mean, I'm sure you've heard me raise on that so many times, but it's, there's a lot of good people here who are working to prevent that. Any else want to make a comment on that? Valerie? Dan, you want to make a comment?
No.
Okay, I'm just going to keep checking with you. Hey, hold on, I just want to make sure if anybody has on question five before we move on. Anything else? Any you guys have questions on the commissioners now?
Oh, so for the steep slopes objective, do you want us to completely eliminate that and have a different one? Or say.
You mean the paragraph?
For under objectives on, on page six of the fifth chapter. If the, since the county already has something like that.
No, it's, we can duplicate it. I don't see a problem with that. I'd rather have more in here, even if it's a duplicate, it's easier for us to refer back to, to our own documentation than the county's documentation.
It's an easy implementation.
Yeah.
Agree.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Caldwell.
Well, to address the 55% of our population here that lives below the poverty level. Jesus, you said to feed the hungry. Something fun we can do is, is build some gardens and plant some fruit trees and plant some nut trees and things that will help us to feed our population here. And we praise you, Lord, for commanding us and enabling us. All glory to you. Thank you.
Diane, you had a quick question or comment?
Yeah.
No, I just, on chapter five, I just wanted to say, when we're talking about engaging the community, I don't know if everybody's aware, but the last time we had a community cleanup, we had like 48 people come out. So we've got interest in the town in engaging citizens to do some of these things. So I think that's a real positive and I just wanted to point it out to everybody. And wanted to ask a question if we know if we're taking full advantage of the fact that there are mitigation classes up at EMI right there. And they have sometimes arranged field trips to go to locations in towns and come. Come up with some interesting mitigation ideas that may help with some of our floodplain issues. I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, Julie, you know, anybody's getting, I know I get the list of the ones for like disaster stuff, but I want to, I don't get the list of those.
Mitigation measures and I, I can talk with you separately about the course managers for that. But just wanted to bring it up to you guys because this is some good stuff. That I tried asking about years ago, like permeable pavement. Told no, you need to make it concrete. So anyway, I'm glad, I'm glad we're progressing.
Gray water. We made the statement of gray water. Okay, if there's nothing on section five, I'll move on to section six. Questions, comments? Dan, you're being awful quiet. I gotta hear a question from you tonight.
And you're not gonna get one, I'm afraid.
Does anybody have a question or comment on section six?
We'll start. Page six dash two. We have figure six point one that talks about the graph that shows the sizes of all the districts. CR is in that figure as well as the table to the left, but there's no definition below that for CR. And we have all of our other zones there. So if we could add CR. Somewhere down there, wherever it's appropriate to squeeze it in. And then there is table six point two residential zones. It talks about. Residential suburban R dash S and I admit, I don't think I've heard of it, but it says it's in our code. It's in our code. But we don't recognize it anywhere in the town.
I'm not sure why it's in the code and not on the zoning map, but we do have it in the code.
Do you know what it says, what the definition of R dash S is? And should we add the definition here since it's in our code? And we reference it. R dash S residential suburban.
That may have been like the main street before we renamed it, but.
R dash.
So.
Should come before R one probably.
Right, so under seventeen point thirty-two, one zero, one zero. Provisions governing residential, so there's R one, R two, R three and RS. The RS residential suburban district is intended to promote the development of single family residential neighborhoods on large lots free from land usage, which might. Adversely affect such development.
Free from land usage? That doesn't even make sense.
Right, the RS district is intended to provide for decreasing densities of development in the outlying areas away from the central business district of the town. So that's, that's the definition that's in the code and.
But we have no areas that qualify for RS.
Yeah, we haven't zoned.
On our zoning map, we have, we don't use it.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, if we're gonna keep it in the code, which obviously we have to at this point, but on six two, I think we should add in the definition. Since we're including all the definitions for zoning. And then are all these definitions on those three pages, it comes directly from the code? I didn't go back and proof it. I didn't double check it against the code. I assumed it all came from the code. Page six dash six. The first paragraph, last sentence. These designations are aligned. Change that word to aligned. And then in the last paragraph, we talk about the connector roads. Or silo, you're laughing, or silo hill, the North Gate subdivision. And then there's another route from West Main Street to South Seton. It says they are depicted on the map. Are they all, I don't think they're all depicted on the map. Are any of them depicted on the map?
The one is the bypass. I'll show you. If you look at this map, this line is the bypass will pass Main Street.
I dare you.
Forever.
Okay, so that one's depicted on the map, but not the others. I think we should identify those. Because I don't know a lot since I'm new about those connector roads or the history or how people feel about the connector road. So if we could just identify them on the map. And then on, under the goals and objectives, page six dash eleven. We, we talked about the main street already, but I, I had mentioned last year that could we look into a legacy grant for businesses? If we could develop a program for facade grants for businesses. I think that would be really helpful. So if we could put that in.
So the current one we have, business owners can apply as well. I believe the odd house. Few years ago, did use a community legacy grant to improve their facade.
But there, but there's a separate community, there's a separate legacy grant from Department of Housing and Community Development. That's for business owners only, so they don't get a half of a match. It's different than the one for residential. It's specifically for businesses. I, I think we should look into that and I'm sure it'll come up again as a talking point when we talk about the next grant program cycle. When we apply for the money. And I had also talked about. Income qualifications. You know, a lot of people can't afford to put up, if you're in the Alice group. You can't afford to put up fifty percent to get a match. So it would be helpful and, and those could very well be the properties that need the most help on Main Street. So I'd really like to see those two things implemented or added into our objectives and strategies. I don't know how everybody feels about it, but. And then I don't, we haven't talked about our transit system at all. When we talk about mobility challenges on the last page, I don't know if we have plans to expand our transit or if we want to discuss that at some point.
So we'll have a chapter on transportation.
Is separate from.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, from community design, okay.
So there. Any other questions? Now, and I wanted to make sure because I tend to people when we talk about floating districts, people aren't sure where and when we can do and we have the map in there. I just want to make everybody. They're comfortable with what we did. So I know, you know, some of us weren't here when we did the floating districts. I just want to make sure. That people are good and understand that because that's a pretty substantial change for the better in my opinion. But I need to make sure everybody understands that we're mentioning it. So. Any other concerns there? Or if you look at six dot four, so that may have been the. On there when we kept talking about possible expandability. So if you see in the gray. Where we went out this year rather than doing it by property lines or thing, we just said, hey, we want to go out X amount. So it gives us a little more breathing room without having to get that detailed. So make sure we're all still going on that because. I think that was a step up. It's the, the map six dot, the figure six dot two. Or sorry, six dot four. Sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one, six dot four though. So if you see the gray area around that, that's where we said we were gonna push it out on six dot four rather than doing it by property line. So that, that's a change that, that's been coming and we were slow out of the gate getting there. So. Say I like the preservation of Main Street. I like the. So I'm, I'm liking all this language, so a lot of it and I. Love the stuff that we're addressing, you know, like maybe secondary meters or gray water. I'm glad that somebody actually understands that. So in total, anybody else have a comment or question they want to make or?
You still haven't answered my question or comment I made before. You still have those three white spots. That aren't zoned or anything. You said the one was that graveyard. What's the two?
Okay, so and I think you're looking at bigger six dot two, right?
Yes.
Okay, so.
No, I was looking at six four.
Six four, okay, six two probably shows the same.
Probably does.
Let me see if I can get those. Okay, yes, six four doesn't.
Yeah, there's three white. One's off of Creamy Road and the other two in the western part of.
So the one is the graveyard that's up there. The other is that farm field that sits behind like Main Street. So that's not part of the town. That's why they're there. They're not within.
Surrounded by the town.
Surrounded by the town, but aren't part of the town.
How'd we do that?
Well, that's just people as you annex things around, you annex by property. So if we look. To be an annex something in the northeast in the near future, you could see that slide the same way. So that's just how annexation works. As long as it connects somewhere. But those are just areas that aren't within our taxable.
What about the property on Creamy Road?
Again, that's just not outside. It's not part of the town.
Boy, weird.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't see the cemetery changing anytime soon. The other two, maybe. But that's when you see those carve outs like that. And if you look at it, because originally. Till nineteen years ago, that whole end of town, Brookfield and Pembroke, were annexed by the town to make those developments. So that's as we've grown out, you know, because especially in that area because of those two developments.
I guess the cemetery wants to stay out because then they don't have to pay the town tax, right?
Dead people have a hard time paying tax.
I guess so.
Okay. If I'm not hearing any questions, we'll make sure, last chance, everybody's good with this. Any further instructions? Or staff or concerns? Yeah, it's, as I said, and you've heard my, probably seen and heard my policy, I think we're heading in the right direction for a lot of community good here. In the long run, you know, I think a lot of good work's being done and you've been doing the vast majority of it.
Thank you.
Okay, with that being said, it's, oh, Diane?
I have a question that kind of relates to this, but it's just a, is that alright?
Okay.
Not exactly on one of the strategies. I just wondered, since we mentioned citizen engagement so much, I just wondered whether the planning commission.
Sorry, I just wondered whether the, we mentioned citizen engagement a lot, which I'm obviously trying to. Get people to read my emails, which I sent way too late today, but. Anyway, I think it's important for citizens to be involved in what's going on and just wondered whether there was any. Direction by the planning commission to include citizens in maybe town meetings. That the town was having with developers or potential developers, or whether you guys go to any of those meetings.
With the, okay, so it's the planning for any of the developers when they come in, until they get to the actual. Development stage and they've submitted plans. It would come here and of course the public's invited to all of our meetings.
All of the public.
Council meetings. It's typically you only hold separate meetings like we did for the comprehensive plan to begin and try to get people in. Or there's a charter change or something like that. You hold separate outside of the normal meetings. With the conference plans, we've. Five public meetings just outside of the normal meetings. Or is it four we're up to now? Three. We've had a couple work group meetings and everything and I know. You've gone out and spoke to a small group of people, you know, Don and I have spoken to some people. It's pulling teeth.
Yeah, it is. I know. I know. I'm, I'm gonna keep trying because I think it's really important. And when you typically, if you go to their meetings, they're gonna be more engaged than if we ask them to come to the town.
And part of it is, is getting the invites or knowing when meetings were or. You know, like seating had a meeting scheduled for tomorrow that just got canceled that I was gonna go to and talk to them. So it's.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Anyway, I just wondered, and, and the meetings that the town staff is having with developers.
Those are private one-on-one. So when this town meets with the developer, since a lot of that may not come to be, those are confidential meetings.
Okay, okay, I just.
It's just got to get to a point that there's gonna be fruition to it, then it comes out in public.
Okay, I hope some of the developers will come up with more than one approach to certain parcels. I'm speaking specifically about Frailly because I'm very interested in that. Can't imagine why, but you know, I hope they come up with more than one so that it's not just. Kind of worked on and then presented and a fait accompli.
Well, I don't think with the property that large, nothing will be a fait accompli.
Okay.
Too much of a land.
It's, it's a lot. So anyway, I just wondered if that had been brought up. Thank you.
Now with that. Are any other last comments, questions? Okay, Dan, your last chance?
Nope.
Okay, with that, the time is seven forty-eight. The meeting of the. September thirtieth Planning Commission is hereby adjourned.